Okay, we're gonna call the meeting door. Please stand for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Member Steele is absent. Member Ryan Well here. Member Frederick here. Member Bill Skerrill?
Here.
Member Holger?
Here.
Member Dean? Here. Member Lee?
Here. Thank you. Next, we have presentations and programs. The Bond Steering Committee presentation. Mrs. Greif and Ms. Simons.
Good evening. I am Becky Simons. I'm a Spanish teacher at Coldwater High School and a parent of two Coldwater -- two students who attend Coldwater schools. I am with Shawna Gray, who is an active community member, as many of you know, and also has children in Coldwater schools. So I'll be doing most of the talking this evening, and she'll be kind of my backup. So if I say the wrong thing on the wrong slide, she's just gonna gracefully pretend like it was all part of the plan. So keep nodding and smiling. So we thank you on behalf of the Bond Steering Committee for allowing us to present the bond recommendation to you this evening. So we are going to begin with the charge of the Bond Committee. So as stated here, our charge was to critically interpret information and bring consensus to a strategic plan for upgrading Coldwater High School to foster exceptional and global learning opportunities, therefore aligning curriculum, activities, and space. So this evening, the committee will work toward developing a bond program recommendation for the Board of Education at the conclusion of their analysis process. So here we are. So our committee was composed of 22 individuals, who are named here. They are teachers, administrators, board members, and parents, and community members as well. We were also joined by many members of a professional team that I'll be referring to throughout the presentation, and included district leaders, as well as architects, the builders, and financial advisors as well. The process was divided into three main parts. The discovery part, which is where we learned a great deal about the district, the vision, and the details behind what we were connecting to. The exploration process, where we began to react to the concepts and the ideas that were presented to us, and find how they meet the vision of the school. And then finally, the recommendation, which is where we are this evening. The committee met at four key meetings, and you can see those in red. And then we had two community engagement sessions as well. And in addition, we had access to a Google Drive where information that was shared at all the meetings, we could access and have more detailed -- details that we could access in our free time. So here are some images that illustrate some of those, as it said, the Bond Steering Committee in action. There was a lot of discussion and energy, and we had some consistent members who attended all of those meetings. And so it was nice to see how the energy in the room as we discussed all of the options. So that brings us to the discovery phase. Let me get to my right spot. Sorry, I know. Right? There we go. Finally done. That's good. So I'd like to take you through the process that we went through. You'll see the discovery phase included a facilities condition assessment, program assessment, a district overview, community sentiments, and finances. So we're actually gonna go through all of these parts very briefly. Superintendent Flynn gave us a thorough understanding of the goals of the district, as well as the projected future trends for the entire district. These are district numbers. Hopefully, you've got a chance to look at this kind of on your own for the projection of students in our school. This is -- this table summarizes, as it says, "The district's outstanding voter-approved, unlimited tax, general obligation bonds as of September 10th." And it qualifies us for the State of Michigan School Bond Learning Program. On the left, you can see this graph shows past millage rates for Coldwater community schools. And on the right, this is the future projected debt millage. So lots of information on that, but hopefully you got a chance to look at it. The team investigated the infrastructure needs of the facility, including architects, engineers, construction professionals, and technology leaders in the district. And the assessment was solely on Coldwater High School. And you can see some of those details summarize on this chart. And the professional team visited CHS and compiled data about the things you can kind of read through here. I won't read the entire thing, but roofing, electrical, mechanical, building systems, and conditions. And the needs were categorized in immediate needs and long-term needs, and allowing the district to plan accordingly based on future financial possibilities. So they're summarized essentially on this chart. You can see in red, these are -- they were separated into four categories. And in red, you can see immediate, one-to-three-year needs, and then four-to-six years, seven-to-nine, and then 10 years plus. The entire detailed report was shared with the committee in the Google Drive that we had access to. So we spent some time looking at these numbers. Then, as you can see here, this graph shows that of those needs, 48% of the needs of the facility's condition assessment were classified as critical. So 48% of the needs need to be taken care of soon. So after the facility assessment was the program assessment. This was another important aspect of evaluating our school. And the professional team took an opportunity to look at the curriculum at Coldwater High School and the spaces at CHS, and see how those work together, and hopefully help the program to flourish instead of the space impeding what we're doing at Coldwater Schools. And the question that they focused on is how make the school environment better support teaching and learning? So looking at what's best for kids. The four drivers that we focused on, you can see here pretty basically the vision of the district, also the activities that occur within the building, the skills that we want the students to learn, and then how the space is used to kind of all these four things, how they work together at Coldwater High School. So I was actually a part of that team in that meeting. They broke that information down, or I would say compiled that information, and surveyed the staff and toured the school. And all of their findings were put into these five principles that are on the left-hand side. So they kind of compiled all of that information, and then actually aligned it very nicely with Marzano's high-reliability schools, which as you know, is a focus and the vision of Coldwater Schools. So I found that these two things really worked well with each other. So they also assessed the building usage. So hopefully you get a chance to look at this. Kind of took an actual map, broke down what spaces are used for what purposes at CHS. And they concluded here on this slide that overall, the facility is not aligned with the vision and goals of the district. So that is what you can see in orange. And so a little more detailed on the next slide has some of the program areas that were assessed in that program assessment. And the orange is showing certain areas, or that most of the areas are not aligned with our vision at CHS. So the space does not align with the vision and the plan. So that brings opportunities for alignment. So that's where the direction that we want to head in the future. We want to realign the spaces at CHS to fit that vision and goals. So they took this in a very tangible way and created the principles for -- let me get my words right. They looked -- They -- here's a -- So these are the principles that guided how they're going to take that space and combine it with a vision. This one's really hard to read. So there are a few more of them here. You can see how these guided concepts that we're going to see later in the presentation became what they pulled out of that data. So the guiding principles, they took this to the committee, and one of our first assignments, you could say, our first worksheets or exercises that we did, was they asked the committee to rank these guiding principles in the order that we felt were important. And so the committee kind of asked homework, took this home and thought about them. And then this is how they were ranked. So you can kind of take a look at that. I'll read through the first three. The first one was to improve our facility attending to the physical environment, improve overall security, and create a strong visual image. And there are a few others there as well. And then -- My answer next to you. Thank you. Good. Awesome. I kind of -- if I -- if I go off of my notes, then I lost track of my notes. So then the exploration process happened. And this is where the professional team looked into what was learned through all of that data and started some concepts, to create some concepts, concepts that they presented to us. So you'll see on this next slide, they came to the committee with five concepts that when they presented them to us, they had the details with them and also the estimated costs with each one. And the committee would get again some worksheets, some exercises, to really analyze and break down and provide feedback of what we thought of those five concepts. And we -- then what we did is they took that feedback and decided to refine those concepts. They came to us and said that these are concepts. And so they collected the feedback that they could. And you can see we kind of rated things, ranked things, wrote in the spaces, and gave them as much feedback as we could. And the consensus of the committee, the direction really was that they were -- that we were choosing Concept D. Without a doubt, you can see that the majority of the committee chose Concept D. So the next step was that the professional team created some refinements of Concept D, some options that we considered. And again, at meeting three, we gave feedback on these iterations of Concept D, the four variations. And you can see lots of worksheets were filled out and in a very organized fashion kind of gave as much feedback as possible that we could. So the next step was that the professional team took our preferred direction, the direction that the committee had chosen, and wanted to get some community feedback. So in the process of two different presentations, the record -- the community, they were brought to the community, and the community also was able to give feedback and again, some worksheets. And you can see that they -- let me find my spot. Their input aligned with our input as well. And 28 of the 29 attendees at the meetings said at the end of the meeting, they filled out the card on the left and said yes, that they would vote for a 1.5 mil increase on the May ballot. So it was very encouraging to see continuity with the community as well. So now to remind you of some of the financials as we get toward the end of this. This scope is achievable with a $64 million bond. The proposal will increase the current debt millage at a rate of 1.5 mils. And you can see here, this table shows the impact. You definitely have to take a moment to look at it a little closer, but the impact on the taxpayers, the property taxpayers, based on the taxable income of their home. And it notes at the top that the median home sale price is noted up there at the top. So that's the median home price in Coldwater community. So this graph, for further reference, the committee actually asked for this information to be gathered. We wanted to see a comparison of local communities. So you can see where Coldwater, all the way to the right, falls on that chart, of where the sinking fund millage compares to other districts that we thought were comparable to our school. So that brings us to this evening, the final recommendation. So following the community engagements, the committee met one more time, and the last time they evaluated the input from the sessions. And it brings us to our final recommendation, which you can see here. So I think we're excited to say that I feel like it was a very thorough process and that on behalf of the steering -- of the Bond Steering Committee, I am pleased to present our final recommendation of a two-story construction, 62,000 square feet. Just gonna kind of read through. It will include administration, media center, six science labs, 36 learning studios, and support spaces. Renovations, so that will be the new structure renovations of flooring, ceilings, painting, casework. You can see lighting replacements, and of course, air conditioning. Some site considerations to point out. So looking kind of at a more scaled-out view, the main entrance would be relocated to the west side of the campus. Parking lot provided the northeast corner. This would require relocation of the transportation facility. And that will allow us two new entrances to the existing site, new parking lot, site improvements for water, store water retention, and a light renovation to the existing office space. So the part you see in yellow will be renovated, and the red part will be the new build with some new potential concepts of what will the space look like around there. So after all this time and effort we put into this process, we are confident and enthusiastic about presenting this to you for your consideration. So we are asking to place a $64 million bond proposal on the May 5, 2026 ballot. And this represents a 1.5 mil increase to the current debt level. So again, we are grateful for the opportunity to have been involved in this process. We look forward to your favorable considerations and the recommendation that we believe will be a positive impact on CHS students and staff and the community. So thank you.
Thanks, Becky.
Ms. Simons. The two-story section is just gonna be the red?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Not the yellow?
Correct. The red, the yellow is the existing structure.
Okay. Thank you. I guess Mr. Shirk, you're up.
Go as fast as I can.
You probably don't have service at me.
Good afternoon. My name is Frank Shirk. I'm the Assistant Principal at the high school. I brought with me Muthana Jaji and Henry Coyle. We're gonna help me present a little bit about what we're doing at CHS. Our title tonight is PBIS at CHS, because one of the big questions I got when I became the Assistant Principal was what is Coldwater High School doing about discipline and behaviors? Earlier in last year, I presented to you about PBIS and our initiatives at CHS. And I just wanted to share your -- a quick reminder, PBIS is Positive Behavior Intervention and Support. So it's looking at the system. It's kind of a mindset shift for a lot of people of how we deal with behaviors. Lots of people think of consequences and discipline are the answer to the test. What research and data shows us is it's not. We use data, we track data, we support by reinforcing and teaching the behaviors that we want to happen at CHS. It's more of a proactive approach than being reactive. We have a PBIS team that meets monthly to look at the referral data. We drill down specifics about the areas of concern in our building, of what kind of behaviors are happening, when, where, why. We look at what we think the perceived motivation is with students, and work on the tier one of a school-wide and develop a detailed goal, which is what we call our drill-down, on each specific behavior that we want. So just why PBIS at CHS? PBIS is research-based. It's been around since the late 1980s. Its practices have stood a lot of tests of time. I've been to multiple schools that are doing this and doing it well, and seen the impact that they have. And I wanted to bring that to CHS. So we are in -- we're technically in what we call Year Two, because our team got trained last year. It was 10 individuals that work at CHS. And so when we move into that, we're technically in Year Two, but implementation with the students, we're at month -- like whatever month we're in. August. Month four. Okay? So real quick, we've been focusing on our team that's decided to focus on three things, three data points. Fights and physical aggression, because that was a major concern over the last couple of years at CHS. Defiance, what kids are getting written up for, referred for, for defiance. And again, we want to thank you for the cellphone program that you gave us, the technology and cellphones. So when you look just at the top, when we're looking at PBIS, Teaching Expectations, Rewarding the Positive Behaviors, and really being explicit with our students. Last year, this is as of today, last year at this point, number of school days in the school year, we had 25 fights or physical aggressions. I'm in the first one. This school year, we only had six. So I'm not a math teacher, never was, but that's a pretty good drop in percentage. Defiance issues for referrals for defiance. Last year, at this point in the school year, we had 56. We're down to 39. Now, technology doesn't look like we're killing it very well, but if you think about it, last year, we didn't have the no-cellphone policy. And when we take away cellphones school-wide, and then that's the cafeteria hallways everywhere, we're only at 305. Last year, we're at 200, but they could have them in the hallways. They could have them in the cafeteria. And we're just really pushing that. What we've noticed on the trend in the first month, I just did a drill-down with our team today after school, we had 100 of those, 105, 130, no, 140, 43. I'll get my numbers mixed up. We're in that first month. So we are really, we are seeing a decrease. Last month, we had 64. We drilled down today sadly. In October, we had 64. In the month of November, we went back up to 94. So we're -- but we're trending much on a lower level than we really thought we would in that first year. So really, what our team does is we review data every single month. We look at a lot of different things. I pulled these real quick from today. You can see, I didn't bring in last year's only because it doesn't look as nice as this, because we use Skyward. This year, we use SWizz, which is through PBIS apps. So it allows us to drill down by grade level, which grades are getting the most referrals, so we can target our interventions more explicitly towards certain groups of students, so we can help support students where they're at rather than setting the tone for -- we set the tone for everybody, and then we can drive our tier-two work at different grade levels. And you can see throughout our things like, you'll see that fight says 12, but remember, we had six, because in every fight, it takes more than one person. So -- and then you'll just see the difference that we have. So we have real good data now that we can track. And as we get through the school year, we'll be seeing more. So I brought two friends with me today because student buy-in is super important, and PBIS, student and staff buy-in. We have a newly-formed leadership class that you guys approved last fall -- or last spring. And the class is made up of multiple demographics from our student population. It's handled and led by Ms. Moore. And it's handled, and we handle CHS PBIS through the student input class. They do all the work. They really focus on catching the data and helping the staff make better plans of how to support students. I'm gonna turn it over to Muthana and Henry, and they're gonna explain to you what they're doing in the leadership class at CHS. Ready? You're up.
All right. Good evening, school board. My name is Henry Coyle. This is my good colleague, Muthana. And today, we're gonna be speaking on behalf of the leadership class.
All right. So what is the leadership class basically about? It's a team of students who collaborate one another to promote a positive change at CHS. They communicate with peers, staff around the school, and they work on many projects for the school as well. Additionally, we also try to fund some funding, grants that would truly help the school store. They also brainstorm ideas and design many plans to carry out within the school community.
All right. So what are our goals? We want to promote inclusivity. We want no one to ever feel left out, really. We want to encourage participation. We want students to be excited to go to school every day, motivate the school using, as Mr. Shirk just said, using PBIS points to like help students kind of feel that initiative every day, improve the atmosphere. We want like an upbeat, content atmosphere at CHS every day. And then develop talent, because even though like this class is full of leaders, but we also want to inspire other people to become leaders as well.
All right. So this is a class day. So the class is divided into many committees. One of the committees is student support. The students go to multiple areas of the school. They create individual representations, how to follow rules. And they also use the CARDS acronym, which stands for Consider, Advocate, Respectful, Dependable, and Safe. Another one is media. They gather information about clubs, after-school events. They also write scripture videos, pi-o'clock places phone during school and class, design even posters to hang up around the school for students to see and be reminded about.
So our four other committees, we have events. They plan major events on calendars. They hang them out around the school, so everyone kind of knows about it. We have feedback. This is kind of the data collector of CHS. They send out surveys to students. We get quality information back, which then can be used by others. We have recognition, informational educating videos. We have a cardinal news, and that too. And then we also have culture-building. We do a lot of creative brainstorming, coming up with ideas from scratch, doing presentations like this. And so those are our six different committees.
So what have we accomplished so far? So the culture-building, for example, they've created a calendar for activities for October's anti-voting campaign, kindness change, sticking a wall, poster competitions, T-shirt competition as well, and kindness challenge. The student support, they publish videos, highlighted how to use the CARDS, like I said, at CHS. They also highlight different rules at school and how they should be followed successfully. The media, they make videos about problems, update students about news, and about like school events for school, like school sports matches. The events, they also organize calendars for execute killers. During that month, they have the cellphone policy, how's it going? And you know, the PBIS, support students that have been a good task. And they also, they're in charge of the standards board, where we put a QR code paper that students can scan with their phone or enter when they go to like their school support matches to get coins for attending the match or the event. The feedback, they also like, you know, ask students to do surveys, what they want to see in the school store, what their required regards or needs, and how we should improve the environment. The recognition, they also film what language it is, how to access Skyward, and the cellphone policy, how it should be followed.
All right. So our plans moving forward in leadership. Leadership, the class, we continue to do initiatives. We try and find funding, try and find grants. We run the school store, which uses PBIS points for rewards. We push the CARDS initiative every single month. Additionally, the students brainstorm ideas to be engaged for all, like the students, and then for the community. We just, we're just practicing having an engaged community. Like I said, cardinal news earlier of everyone keep just learning and engaging with the community. And then we additionally already have a place and project for a proposed fund fair, which we're still kind of working on. Thank you for your time. This is just a collective of all things leadership has been working on. Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Mr. Shirk, can I get a copy of that? Twelve point? For $5, I will send it to you.
I'm not paid or nothing.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
What grade are you guys in?
I'm a freshman.
I'm a sophomore.
Okay. So being in the building just the first year for a sorority So being in the building just the first year, so just for you, have you seen a big difference from last year to this year? Not just with the class, but in the general feeling every day in the hallways or in the classroom?
Yeah, I definitely have seen the difference from last year. We've seen some improvements in cell phone policies. We've seen like, you know, less problems and fights for our students because of problems. Overall, it's a better environment, so we'll probably see that.
Good. All right, thank you. Nicely done. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have a request for public participation. Is there anybody who wishes to address the board? If you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to leave.
Have a chance.
Anybody that wants to escape.
We won't judge you. It's okay.
We're not taking that. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody. We are not boring. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from October 27, 2025. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, support.
Any discussion? All in favor? I oppose, motion passes. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
There are two, there's a change on the personnel recommendations. The Board of Education accepting the resignation of James Dayton from his part-time supervisor position. In the original minute, or in the original agenda, Seth Larson, he was working at Lakeland Elementary. So I'm going to note that change. And then we are adding the recommendation to approve the administration to employ Rahil Nasar for a part-time supervisor position at Lakeland Elementary.
All right, thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. Any communication? Personnel recommendations.
Mr. Flynn, under personnel recommendations relative to support staff, the Board of Education accept the resignation of Brenda Woods from bus driver position effective October 31, 2025. The Board of Education accept the resignation of Jessica Rasmussen from the part-time lunchroom supervision position at Lake Middle School effective November 11, 2025. The Board of Education approve the administrative recommendation to employ Jessica Rasmussen for the full-time transportation secretary position effective November 11, 2025. The Board of Education approve the administrative recommendation to employ Ruth Hefty for the part-time lunchroom supervision position at Lake Middle School effective November 10, 2025. The Board of Education accept the resignation of James Dayton for the part-time supervisor position at Lakeland Elementary effective November 7, 2025. Board of Education approve the administrative recommendation to employ James Dayton for the part-time RTP coordinator position at Lake Middle School effective November 10, 2025. Board of Education approve the administrative recommendation to employ Christian Roberts for the student transportation driver position for Coldwater Schools effective immediately upon board approval. And the Board of Education approve the administrative recommendation to employ Rahil Nasar for the part-time supervisor position at Lakeland Elementary pending background check.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Next, we have the approval of the October accounts for payment, financial statements. Do you remember?
Be resolved that the following accounts for October be approved for payment as follows. General fund accounts in the amount of $2,098,305.14. Special revenue accounts in the amount of $248,507.64. And be resolved that the general fund financial statements be approved as presented.
Thank you. Next, we have acceptance and approval of gifts of the member.
Recently, the administration was made aware of the quality of gifts offered by the donors listed below. Recognition and approval for acceptance of gifts are being sought. Altrusa International Branch County Monetary Funds to Coldwater Community School Project REIT, $2,310. Coldwater Coalition of Academic Excellence Monetary Fund to Coldwater High School, We People, $4,576.75. Integrated Functional Supports Monetary Funds to LMS Youth and Government, $780. Coldwater Noon Club, Brian Muslin, Monetary Funds to LMS Youth and Government, $360. CISD Mini Grant Monetary Funds, Chelsea Wilburg, CHS Art Teacher, $1,000. The Better Best Monetary Funds for Sarah Davis, CHS Interact Book Club Advisor, $500. The gracious continued support of the donors listed above sincerely appreciated. We ask the board accept the gifts noted and acknowledge the donor's generosity. Be resolved, Board of Education gratefully accepts the gifts as presented. Be further resolved with a letter of appreciation on behalf of the board to be sent to the donors listed above for the work following generous gifts.
Thank you, Mr. Holbrook. That is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I oppose.
Oppose, motion passes. Next, we have building reports. Principals have anything to add?
I would just like to say that tomorrow at 1:00, if you're not busy, the therapy ponies will be back at X-Large Central.
You know, you're lucky that you mentioned those because I was going to ask you where the therapy ponies are since we have the therapy dog.
Yeah, you should have ponies every time. Well, I will add, we're having our first PBIS celebration with the kids tomorrow. So we hope to invite families in next time, but this is a trial run. So we're going to celebrate positive behavior tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're all welcome, of course.
Mrs. Reardon, would you like to talk about your Veterans Day program that was excellent?
Well, thank you.
Again.
Thanks. We had, I think, over 60 veterans in the community that came in for the program. And then we also went to Maple Lawn a couple of days prior, so that was nice so we could honor those veterans at Maple Lawn. So it was a great morning, and then in the afternoon, we had music programs honoring the veterans too. So it was a great day.
Thank you. Mr. Dr. Holt, anything?
You just started your report. I'm holding on to my sky. It's going well.
The Director of Curriculum and Instruction, what have you got to report this month?
Elementary curriculum chairs have been busy working on narrowing down our pilots for our Tier One literacy. We hope to have that narrowed down to two and a recommendation for adoption for next fall to the board in January.
I'm happy to report that at the Veterans Day program, the third grade students, there was a whole classroom that could read.
Thank you. Thank the teachers, don't thank me. I don't think that was Gary. She stayed so white during the entire. I know. That was Gary so late.
Next, we have the Board Committee reports.
We had two committee meetings this month. We had the Policy Committee and the Finance Committee.
So I am going to read the notes that Mr. Flynn gave me because he didn't think I could handle this. It said, "As the Policy Committee met to discuss the Fall Niola recommended updates, board members have been given the proposed changes to review prior to today's meeting. There are two areas of focus this round. The first deals with the repeal and reassignment of wording in the topic of nondiscrimination to streamline and consolidate the policy manual to be consistent. This includes three policies for adoption, six for deletion, and five for technical corrections. This does not alter the intent or scope of any of the previous policies. The second part consists mostly of changes that are deemed necessary due to the changes in state and federal legislation, clarification of language, and the increasing needs of cybersecurity safeguards." Is that enough?
That's enough, yeah. Well done.
The Finance Committee did not, he didn't seem fit to write her anything because she's better at it than I.
Yeah, I didn't get a script. So the Budget Finance Committee met last Friday, and we discussed the updated budget for the year, which is ahead of schedule and looking really good.
Just that it's, we do two to three budget amendments a year. Our first one is usually in December, but the Finance Department and the offices have been busy and trying to get it done before the holidays.
Thank you. Next, we have the Superintendent's Report.
First and foremost, when writing the script for the, I didn't know who was going to read it, so that was just for anybody, not just for you. Last week, we had a wonderful trip. Those that were able to go to Dearborn schools where, you know, with the promotion of Becky Heaton to full-time ML Director and the focus on almost a third of our students who are English as a second language, we want to look around and we want to see what are we doing good and what can we be doing better? So we went big. We swung for the fences in the first time, and we were graciously hosted for a day at Dearborn Public Schools. We are a school district of roughly 3,000 kids with approximately 33% of our students who are English as a second language. Dearborn Public Schools this year is just under 20,000 students with almost 100% English as a second language students. So it was an eye-opening experience for me to see both at the high school level and at the early elementary level. But what I heard in feedback is the initial reaction was, we are doing a lot of things good right now, but we saw areas that we could bring back to our, to our staff for improvement to better serve not just our ESL population, but all of our students. So it was a worthwhile day, and I appreciate all of the administrators and instructors that were able to come with us on that day. We had a pupil accounting audit for Jefferson Elementary School. We received a positive response with no corrective action, so I'd like to do a special shout-out to Julie Fitch, who is in charge of our pupil accounting here at Central Office, but also the office staff at Jefferson that go above and beyond to make sure that they stay on top of all of that. So that was our only building that was audited this go-around. Senior class trip, the senior classes requested my approval for their class trip. This year, they'll be traveling to Mackinac Island, and as this is only a one-day trip, doesn't require board approval, they'll be back. It's no overnight, and it's not out of state, but we wanted to let you know that they will be traveling to Mackinac Island this year. Prosecuting Attorney Zachary Stempian and his team came to the middle school to give a presentation. They've been asking how they can get in front of kids and talk about important issues since last spring, and thank you to Jacob Kumar and the staff there at the junior high for making it happen. So they were, they gave a presentation to kids highlighting the importance of making informed choices and understanding personal responsibility, talking about safe and appropriate use of social media, consequences for making false threats, substance awareness, consent, and safe driving practices. So we look forward to the next time that he can come. I believe he's going to try to get into the ninth grade classes at the high school and continue with that with his team. And then last but not least, if you haven't already heard it or seen it in the paper, we are well into our media blitz for bus drivers. We need them, we'll take them. And we hope that it's productive. It was a combined effort with Quinte and Bronton Schools, so we're looking at it more of a countywide issue with my dream of a countywide substitute list. That's my goal out of this, is if we could do a countywide substitute list.
Bus driver list?
Yeah, yeah. So we'll see how it goes.
Are we all approximately equal in pay?
Approximately, yeah.
I think we are.
That'll be the next step is if we, if we want to go for a countywide K scale. But that's the next conversation. They don't know that part yet, so.
If you pay them, they may not come.
That is a very difficult job.
It is.
And every single one of our, yeah, and every single one of our bus drivers needs to be applauded every time we see them because they're the first face that the kids see in the day and the last face that they see at the end of the day, and they are so important to our district that we hope that we can add to those numbers.
Good.
And that's all I have.
Are there any discussion items? No? Okay, we're going on to the action items. Request to approve the resolution for the preliminary qualification application for the bond. Following presentation by the Bond Steering Committee, administration is requesting board approval of the resolution for the preliminary qualification application submission to place a $64 million bond proposal on the May 5, 2026 ballot. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the resolution for the preliminary qualification application submission to place a $64 million dollar bond proposal on the May 5, 2026 ballot as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved, support.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Steele is absent. Member Deane?
Yes.
Member Billspurrow?
Yes.
Member Lionwelt?
Yes.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to amend and approve the 2025-2026 budgets. We reviewed the general fund, the food service fund, preschool, daycare, tuition fund. Be resolved, the Board of Education accepts the amendments of the 2025-2026 general fund budget, food service budget, preschool and daycare tuition budget. Is there a motion?
So moved, support.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Member Lionwelt?
Yes.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Billspurrow?
Yes.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Steele is absent. Member Deane?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the request to consider levying summer tax in the city of Coldwater. We've done this every year for as long as I've been on the board. And be resolved that all resolutions and parts of resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provisions of the Resolution B and the same are hereby rescinded and be finally resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the secretary to sign the annual summer tax resolution on its behalf. Is there a motion?
So moved, support.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Billspurrow?
Yes.
Member Deane?
Yes.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Lionwelt?
Yes.
Member Steele is absent. Member Lake?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the first reading of the revised and rescinded policies, which were previously alluded to. Be resolved, the Board of Education acknowledges the recommendation of the first reading of the revised and rescinded board policies as submitted. Is there a motion?
So moved, support.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Member Steele is absent. Member Lionwelt?
Yes.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Billspurrow?
Yes.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Deane?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Question passes. Next, regular meeting of the Board of Education will be held on Monday, December 15, 2025, at 6:00 in the evening at the Administrative Service Center located at 401 Stockwood Drive in Coldwater. We're adjourned.